Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the planning and zoning board. I apologize for two minutes late. If you've been all standing, please sit down.
The United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada, stands on the nation of God, indivisible, and every being just for all.
Thank you very much. Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act has been given by the clerk in the following manner. Posted on the board of the borough's office, emailed to retrospect and the carrier post. We have roll call, please.
Chairwoman Cleland.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Van Allen.
Here.
Debris excused. She did call. Mr. Potowski is excused. Yeah, I'm sorry. Joyce again. Mr. Ockley?
Here.
Mr. LaVerde?
Here.
Mayor Capas?
Here.
Mr. Renee?
Excused.
Ms. Dodd?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Excused.
Mr. Rowan?
Here.
And Ms. Catapool?
Here.
And Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Thank you. At this point in time... Seven. Okay, so we have seven. So we are going to be seating Mrs. Dodd in place of Mr. Potowski. He's a regular member. So we're seating him. All right. A motion is in order for the approval of the minutes for the September 11th meeting. We did not have a meeting in October as there was nothing on the agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Van Allen?
Second.
Mr. Ockley on favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, on business, we have a resolution 19-14. Mr. Rowan?
Yes, this was an application of George Bettiselli, 617 Front Road, Block 1616, allowing in a normal residential zone. This was approved for a two-car garage 24 by 24 and a side yard variance of two feet, where I believe five feet is required. This resolution, when it was passed, we made the approval condition upon the submission of a grading plan by the applicant in order to confirm that no adverse grading conditions are created by the proposed improvements. Apparently, the applicant has discussed with our engineer that there's been a modification or redirection of either the roof line or wood or drainage, where now Mr. Box feels that there is not the need for a grading plan. However, we have to pass the resolution as approved at night, and I suggested to Mr. Box's office that decompose a letter saying that the grading plan is not required at this time, so we can add that to the file.
So could I just make a statement, though? I think the council is still going to move forward with an ordinance that identifies the need for this grading plan for potential applications based on some type of criteria. If the impervious...
So you're saying only case-by-case basis?
Well, I think we have to come up with a threshold. So say hypothetically, someone, once they exceed the impervious coverage, it triggers a grading plan. If they exceed... Candice, if you want to jump in, I don't know if you have an opinion, but there should be something that should trigger it, not for every single application.
Yeah, I will leave Steve to recommend the actual square footage or some kind of disturbance area, but I think it's a good idea.
Okay, some threshold.
Yeah, some kind of trigger to require that. Usually, yeah, if you need variance, you're definitely going to have to be open to that. But if there's something more than... Something that would require more disturbance of the land, but still as a conforming use, then not recovery.
So the thought process, I think, was that some of the members had said was that the applicant would know prior to coming in front of us that he's going to need this also. So not only does he needs his variance, he's going to know, hey, if I'm doing this and I'm exceeding my impervious or I'm exceeding the square footage, I'm going to have to have this also. Is that correct?
Yeah, I look at that one. Also, in addition, should we have a square footage amount for somebody who does not need a variance? Because we could still run into the same problem.
Absolutely.
Right. Yeah.
If everybody has... Wants to put a garage up on that block, we now just put...
Yes.
Or they don't even have to come before our board, and now we have six garages going up, taking up that surface.
But that would be... But once again, this is where the ordinance comes in. We've talked about impervious coverage. We've talked about these factors. So even the designer officer would deny it based on the impervious coverage aspect. Correct?
Yes, if it exceeds the impervious.
It exceeds.
We're changing the law.
So that would be the variance, and that would trigger the grading thing. So I just want to make sure, because there was a lot of discussion on how we've got to protect everyone.
Okay, any further discussion before we take a vote on that resolution? Ms. Pinto? Roll call, please.
Does anyone make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion to approve as amended. Please.
Second.
Change. And who needs a second?
Yes, please.
Chairwoman Cleland.
Yes.
Mr. Van Allen.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Ockley.
Yes.
Mr. LaVerde.
Yes.
Mayor Capas.
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion is passed and reorganized under new business. This evening, we have a review for our redevelopment plan for master plan consistency and recommendations to mayor and council. You all should have received something on your email regarding the redevelopment. Our latest... Let's see, I think our latest version dated November 2019. We have been meeting as a redevelopment committee on the last Tuesday of the month for a few months and trying to massage this together. Mayor and council did the first reading of this at their meeting last Tuesday... I'm sorry, this Wednesday after election day, and it now bounces back to us to make any recommendations. If we feel that anything in this redevelopment plan is not in concert with our master plan, it is at this point in time we need to point that out and make any recommendations to change such plan before we send it back to mayor and council. I do want to reiterate that once this plan is passed by mayor and council, it can be amended as many times as we want, okay? This is not something that anyone needs to get and to highty over and say, oh, my goodness, and just pass this redevelopment plan, and the way it's written is the way it's going to be forever and ever and ever. That is absolutely not the case. I've had conversations with Mr. Box, and we can absolutely, once we get a or numerous redevelopers in place, we can absolutely, dependent upon what their plans are, we can have them come in and we can amend it as we see fit as a town. They're not going to dictate to us what they're going to do. Again, we're going to reiterate, this is a non-condemnation exercise. So this is non-condemnation. No one's going to be able to be pulled with a forfeit of property. This is simply something... This is a vehicle to get the town moving, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get a vehicle together here to get the town moving to make things easier on a redevelopment or two or three or four to come in and do some nice things in our town and make us a little bit more marketable and make it a nicer mile. So if anyone has any questions or if they have any concerns, now would be the time. I did reach out to Mr. Lee and Mr. Renee. Are at another meeting this evening on behalf of our town. I just left that meeting, and so I did reach out to them and ask them if they had any questions or concerns. Mr. Lee did send me this, and I'm just going to read it into the minutes because I want his voice to be heard, because, again, he's doing something else on our behalf this evening. It says, "Thanks for the opportunity to voice my concerns. I think four-story units of any kind in a redevelopment zone would be out of scale with the rest of the town. I think if you look at the similar structure recently built on Hadn Avenue West Hop, you'll agree that it looms and makes the corridor at that point feel claustrophobic. I know my wife is strongly opposed to that structure. We're also both concerned about early contributing to the light pollution in general. The lantern-type street lamps along the pike were not chosen with this in mind and therefore shouldn't be single out as a standard to replicate. I would be happy to share with the board a few white papers that point to these fixtures as a fourth choice. Lastly, I refer for a period of public review before the plan is irrevocably adopted. There was a lot of confusion and suspicion about the redevelopment plan when it was first introduced, allowing the public, especially those living in the zone, an opportunity to participate in the crafting of the plan will go a long way toward generating the support that will be needed if the plan is to be successful, respectfully submitted. J. Kenneth Lee." I then, upon reading that, I did call Ken back, and I spoke to him on the phone, and I did tell him that, you know, basically, it's not irrevocably adopted, and that we're going to do everything that we can, you know, to try to allow the public, you know, any time that they want to come in and discuss with us. And I also, we had a little bit of a back-and-forth conversation on email, because he had asked me a couple of things, and in response to that email, he sent me another email, which I mean, I really applaud his diligence in trying to do a lot for our town on his own time. He wrote me high candy, "I appreciate the phone call last night to discuss the redevelopment plan. I have been reading more of the community engagement model, put forward the community heart and soul plan, which is where Councilmember Harry and Mr. Lee are this evening. I wanted to review this with you. Do you feel this system is in line with the goals of the planning board? And if so, what steps can we take to implement this model?" And the bullet points are engage residents, businesses, and other stakeholders in order to create a priority list of issues to be addressed, create a list of all stakeholders and township-wide projects that help residents, bring underrepresented groups into the conversation of community and economic development, use community feedback to identify assets and opportunities for improvement, keep the community informed and educated about the project, develop a bottoms-up shared vision of community development, create lasting connections and dialogue between community stakeholders, develop a communication and media avenue to spread the word to all sectors. Thanks again for your interest in leadership. Signed, Ken." I answered him back with, and this is very quick, and I'll be on my way here, but I just wanted to have his representation here. I read through this yesterday to give it my best consideration. Not sure this is what you had in mind, but here are a couple of things I thought might get some footing. The biggest... This is me speaking to Ken. The biggest challenge we have, in my opinion, is communication. We mail a newsletter to all residents once or twice a year, but that will not achieve the level of shared information this model is requiring. I think our best tool that we already have in place at this point in time is our website. Perhaps we could do weekly postings of public works department's projects, and that would show tax dollars of work. I think posting all new hires and open positions within the borough would create a feeling of transparency, and I like the idea of hiring people from within the town if at all possible. I think that is a way to bring underrepresented groups into our economy. Post all roadway slash street improvements regardless of their county or state sponsor, or if the town budgeted for the improvements, and note if the grant money or tax dollars were used. Again, trying to keep the public informed about what's going on, people that don't come to meetings and things of that nature, and making the most of our digital sign at the Borough Hall and Harry Williams Building. And I also wrote that, most of all, what you're spearheading is fantastic. Putting people of like thinking together to collaborate and network is the grassroots of any successful redevelopment plan. I'm not sure who manages the website, but perhaps if you sit down with Nick and get his input as well. And then I just wish to involve his community heart and soul event this evening. So those are some of the concerns that Ken had, I think. I spoke with Ken this evening and with John this evening before I came here, and they're very much on board with what we're doing, and they're very excited about it. And what they're doing right now, and I'll go into that under my little report, is they're at a heart and soul meeting for a grant for the town, but that's not to do with redevelopment. So I'm just going to wrap up with that. And again, we've had local meetings with Candace and Steve with our redevelopment committee on Tuesday afternoons, and, you know, we've kind of massaged what we started out with to what I think is a very plausible beginning, and I'm going to open it up to the rest of the board members after the comment.
I mean, I think he's got a valid point about the four-story building. I know where he's talking about, but if we have more than just one, I think we'll be okay, but...
Well, did I ask Candace to... You know, you heard the concerns. You've been at the meetings with Ken. They can be interesting. Could you at least elaborate? I think what Candy, the chairwoman, had said from the get-go was that this was just a broad stroke to not box anybody into a corner.
Or out.
Or out. That's a better way of saying it. Could you explain to, obviously, the members of the board and the public and to Ken, who's not here, what this plan actually is?
Yes, absolutely.
Record for it, please. We'll make sure it's on the record.
Here we go. Yes, so I like to think about the redevelopment planning process as kind of three steps. So we did the preliminary investigation, which is looking at the area, determining if it's an area in need of redevelopment. The redevelopment plan is the second step, which allows this framework for a redeveloper to come in and be able to visualize what the municipality is thinking for that area. And that's what it is. It's a framework, and it acts as an overlay zone. The underlying uses are still permitted. You don't have to go with the redevelopment plan if you want to develop what's permitted by ordinance in the underlying commercial or residential zone that you're in. You can absolutely go ahead and do that. And then if you want to be a redeveloper and get the benefit of the redevelopment plan, then the next step is to go to the Borough Council and get redevelopment... the redevelopers designation and become... Come into agreement with the redevelopment entity, which is Borough Council. So that agreement is the third kind of a final step, where the redeveloper has their plans set and goes back and forth with the council to come up with an agreement that allows them to do what they want to do within the redevelopment plan framework. But again, if they're saying they want a four-story building, for instance, that is allowed in the plan, but not necessarily the vision of the council at that moment in time, then that's under the council's control, so...
And the projects that could still come from the planning board.
And then the projects, yes. So there would be an agreement, and there would be kind of a... It wouldn't be fully engineered plans, but it would be a conceptual, pretty detailed enough plan for the council to be comfortable with signing the redevelopment agreement and allowing that to go forward. So the next step would be for them to come to the planning board with their fully engineered plan. Is it that time, if the time when the back-and-forth is happening with council in creating the redevelopment agreement, that it's... They show their pictures and their architectural renderings of a four-story building, and the council's like, wait a minute, this is not what we were envisioning for this. You can amend your redevelopment plan and not allow that to be part of it.
It's still out of our purview to prohibit something like that. They decide they want to put up a four-story building, you know, in a place that we think is not appropriate.
And it's too close to the road.
Right.
It's still within our purview.
But I don't think we should rule anything out.
Right, right. Exactly. That's what we're going to do.
This document does... This is a guidance document.
It's a guide.
And once there shoulds, not shalls, in the verb.
It should, yeah.
So this is what we're providing to the redevelopers to use as a guidance document for their management back to...
They'll shop with the council.
Right, right. And they can't have an eight-story building, although if they want one, they could still come to you and say, will you even entertain this idea of revising the redevelopment plans, allowing for this eight-story building on this parcel? And you would look at it and either say, absolutely not, or, I don't know, maybe that location...
Or maybe six.
Or whatever it is. Or if we want to do something that wasn't envisioned in this redevelopment plan, do you agree with this plan?
My idea is I don't want to box people out from the get-go, from the jump.
Yes.
I don't want to put so many rules and regulations out there that people are like, what the heck, this...
And that's... And you'll... I mean, there's a lot...
There'll be everything to...
There's a lot of uses.
Good stuff.
Allow, yes. And the bulk standards were purposely left open-ended because, again, leave it to a redeveloper that has a stake in what they want to build and come to you with some sort of creative thing that we might not even know to think about at this moment in time, but maybe 10 years from now, there's something, somewhere, something, some use, some building style that is innovative and makes a lot of sense, and then that would be set in stone once you do your redevelopment agreement, and then they would still come for review for engineering and planning board approvals. But the council has to give a third blessing in the form of the redevelopment agreement first. So, yeah, the plan lies out the framework and kind of lets the redeveloper know that they have options along the whole area.
So if the plan comes in front of the mayor and council and they disapprove it, then we don't even say it?
You will not say it, no.
And as a planning board, under a redevelopment application, we can't grant the variances. All right? So we could... A developer couldn't come in and say, look, we know that it says a four-story limit, but here's a great plan for a six-story. We can't hear it? We can't vote? It has to go back to the council.
So once again, for everybody, you know, nothing was happening on the pike. We all agree.
Certain sections, definitely.
Certain sections of the pike have been underdeveloped and underutilized. Nothing was happening. I would argue that this action is at least getting us started. We're putting some lines in the water to try to have it, but like you said, we don't want to start off with such a rigorous... Everything has to be bright. Everything has to have something to that nature. I think we have to evolve a little bit, and though I appreciate Ken's opinion a lot about what he said, I would, you know, I'd give examples where anything can work, and that's why I think we have to be more open-minded. I think one of his concerns from the get-go was we didn't have this rigorous plan, and I think Candace and Box's office made it very clear that a rigorous plan would be more disadvantage than an advantage for our situation. Just on another note, as we're all considering this, is just by what we're doing, there is some interest. There is. The gentleman that I spoke about this evening, who was looking at an Ockley on the Blackhurst Pike, called Ms. Pinto and then called me, and, you know, wanted to know what the redevelopment might entail for him. I told him, in his particular case, it really wouldn't, but the fact that he was interested, the fact that he did see the article in the Philadelphia Inquirer, and that was one of the things that inspired him, that he didn't realize that there were 20,000 cars that drove down the Blackhurst Pike every day. So you are right about, and he's right about, the information getting out there. You know, we can put it out there. We're not going to say it. Everybody's going to see it, because I personally don't subscribe to the Philadelphia Inquirer. So I didn't even get the article until somebody gave it to me, but I think the more things that we put out there, it works. But there's an example where one individual did see something, read it, and it got him a little bit interested. Other times, out in different events, people have heard that Bowie is doing this. So there are a group of individuals that are always looking for opportunities that are out there, and that's what we have to talk to. We've met with a couple, and after we go down this, I'm going to bring something else up, but the interest is there, and we are going to have to do some investing into promoting this. And I think the group from the get-go wanted to do that first, if you remember. That's at the end.
Yeah.
Once we get all our legal stuff done. You were one of those, yeah. She wanted to promote from day one, which I thought was a positive thing, but it wasn't the process.
Right.
And what we've learned from our lawyers is...
The process.
The process. And what we've learned, right, we don't want to get sued, and I think we have to protect the borough all the time when we're doing things. So Candace, I appreciate everything you've done. You've taken a lot of back-and-forth, and you've gone through it very well.
Yeah.
And Ken, actually, again, we spoke again this evening. He was very receptive to everything I said. We had a probably half-hour conversation, whether it was Monday night, and I just explained to him, you know, how things work, because he's new to the table. We used to play with him this past year, and he brings a whole lot to the table, and we're very blessed to have him in the town for a number of reasons. But, you know, we went through a lot of the things, you know, as far as, again, to me, it's all about communication. You know, we... I don't think in this day and age, people want to come out to a meeting, they want to look at their phone. You know what I mean? So I think the more that we utilize our website to put information out there, the better it will be. We pretty much have two people here this evening, and we're doing one of the most major things that we've done in this town in a long time. You know what I'm saying? This is one of the most...
But they're two very important...
That's right.
They are. They represent...
We've not done something of this magnitude in quite a long time, and I was ready for a Q and A, and Trady's probably got a whole book of questions for me, but, you know, I really do believe that we have to put the information out there on the website, because people go to their phones, they go to their computers, they don't come out to meetings. It's just not the way of life anymore, so... And I personally think that any junior or senior in high school could probably do anything in four hours that would take me a week to do, because they're just that acclimated with it. So, you know, I don't think it would be that expensive of an endeavor for the borough to hire someone from their IT class at Troyton or wherever and come in four hours a week and Ms. Pinto just gives them a list of things. Okay, here's what called works is doing. Here's the posting for this. And they just go in there and they massage it, they put it in the way, and the information's up. You know, so that's something that I think we all need to capitalize on. I did an email list at my company on Monday. Within an hour, I had eight people calling, making appointments, wanting my company to come in, within an hour. That's just how it works. You know what I mean? I did their face. Yeah, I can do direct mail. We have the back page or retro effect. I get some stuff from that. Eight calls in the first hour from the email list. That's just the way... That's the way it is now. So we have to embrace it. You can't say, I'm not doing that. You have to embrace it and say, okay, fine, we're going to pay a high school kid 20 bucks an hour, four hours a week to come in and do our website, and it takes five hours, pay five hours. You know, we get the info out there and let people know what's going on, and let them embrace what we're doing. Let them feel a part of this. You know what I mean? Like, that's the way I did it.
Well, once we improve this this evening and council passes the ordinance, all this stuff will be on the website.
Okay. And this can be viewed by the public now. It will be in the notice for the ordinance, and anyone can come in, and you can probably post it if you have the capability. Be on the... I don't see why it can't be on the board, on the website also, in the draft format.
Yeah. Put it out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing... I mean, I just think the more you put it out there and you make people feel empowered with it, they have a question, they can call or come in, and you answer their question, and you put them at ease rather than have anxiety about what might be happening in their neighborhood. That's not fair. You know what I mean? It's their town. You know, what we're here for is to try to make them feel comfortable. So is there any other questions before we make a motion on this?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just want to reiterate that the primary purpose, besides reviewing it and giving any comments in general to council, is also to confirm that there is... This redevelopment plan is in fact consistent with your master plan, and that's a part of the process. We did review the master plan and determine that it is consistent and... and determine that it is consistent, and it's up to you as the planning board to make that recommendation and review.
Yeah, everyone, I believe, had a copy of that further review last week, and I'm assuming everyone reviewed it. I did, and then Mr. Renee, Mr. Lee did, and they were all comfortable with it.
Yeah, and the master plan, sorry, so the 2017 master plan reexamination report, and it does specifically address the Black Horse Pike corridor and the need for redevelopment and revitalization. So not only is it not conflicting with it, but it is actually.
Reinforcing it.
Reinforcing it.
Yes. Uh, no. Any else, Candace?
Uh, no, that's it for me.
Anything else from any members of the board? Okay, with that, we will entertain a motion to adopt resolution 1950, Mr. Rowan?
Yes, this is a resolution and review and recommendation from the Runnymede Borough Planning and zoning Board to the Runnymede Borough Mayor and Council regarding the redevelopment plan, which has been prepared by BOP associates and recommending that they adopt the plan.
Is there a motion on the floor to adopt?
I may come over here today.
No problem on this.
No, no, this is just a resolution.
All right, motion on the floor, by Mr. Offly?
Ms. Dodd.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Verdi.
Marion Fred.
Marion Fred. Okay, wait, is that a sick one, Marion Fred? All right, but motion by Ms. Dodd and seconded by Mr. Laberty, roll call please.
Ms. Cleham.
Yes.
Mr. Vanelle.
Yes.
Mr. Roy.
Yes.
Mr. Offly.
Yes.
Mr. Laberty.
Yes.
Mary Potters.
I won't stay.
Ms. Dodd's, yes.
Thank you very much, okay. It's a long time coming, and a hope and dreams and prayer that we can get some stuff moving, that would be a very exciting thing. We have, just real quick, we did get a letter from Dan McDevitt Electric. I'm assuming Mr. Knight, you received this regarding Mr. Sweeney's application to sell Christmas trees at the water ice.
Yes.
So everything is in order and he's getting his permit.
Yes.
Okay.
I sent Keith an email confirming that we received it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Laberty. A couple of things I had, again, Ken, he is a wonderful, creative, artist fellow. This is a regular, something he made for the flagpost or telephone poles, or everyone calls their.
The Rising Phoenix, I like it.
Yeah, it's really cool, it's really nice.
It's good.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, it, it looks really neat, and I don't know, what we, what, Nick, what do we need to do to lead a.
We should wait till after the holidays.
Wait, we need to get sponsors for these, or?
Not that, but it's probably possible, we could get, possibly get sponsorship for it. I think it's a neat idea, though I'm always cautious, because, like you said earlier, communication, people see certain things and react, and we're all here when they came up to the meetings, they went alive in their house. So I do get a little nervous, but at the same time, I agree with it, and, and.
Yeah, at the same time.
The 20,000 cars a day.
Yeah.
This would be helpful, I mean, what's everybody else thinking?
I think.
It's a good idea, I just always have concerns.
Oh, when we, when we talked, I think I, I agree with you about going out and being more aggressive with it.
We have to be proactive.
Well, when, when can we go out and ask some of the businesses that might be looking for somebody to redevelop their, we had a lot of interest from business owners that day at the meeting too, like just people asking other questions.
I think we're almost at it.
Once we pass this ordinance, I agree with you, because some of the, the people have come into town already looking for properties. I've given some phone numbers out, that it's kind of a gray area, because I said, well, look, this person, they don't have a for-sale sign up, but I know who the owner is, if you want to talk to them. So we've had a few of that, and I think, it's funny you say that, because a few of the business owners, they, I think they're interested, they're intrigued, but like, it's fishing again, well, how much you going to give them? Do you understand? It's, and I think that's a very, we're in a very interesting period of time right now, where there's properties out there that may be intrigued to do something, but are kind of saying, well, you're going to give me a million dollars? Okay, if it's a million dollars, we'll talk, and things like that, so I'm, I'm curious to bet.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
What comes first, does the person want to sell it versus the person who?
If we put it in front of somebody's business, they might, I'm not interested in this, I don't want that in front of my building.
It's very interesting if the sign is in front of someone's building.
That's what I'm saying, but then there might be somebody interested that wants one, hey, can I have one of those in front of my building?
It, that's, it's a very interesting thing. My own personal experience with, with development, if everyone knows where the Bull Greens was built next door to me, the gentleman that, that put that together, it was not a redevelopment zone, he simply knocked on the doors, spoke to the property owners, through, I think, a vendor actually, bundled the properties together, got agreements of sale to do this, before anybody even knew what was going on, because a lot of times people don't want to know that they're selling the building, you agree with that, Dennis?
I do.
A lot of people don't want, especially if it falls through, so that's why I say there's always a perspective here of, of that. And one other quick one, I, one time I had people sign a petition once, and I ended up getting a phone call later saying, take my name off the petition, because people, once again, didn't, the mother didn't want to be associated with what the, what the petition was for. So, you know, these are the kind of things that I'll talk about business owners. So I agree with you, I think promoting it is the way to do it.
Yeah.
But if we're promoting it in a way that, you're 100% right, if we put it in front of certain business and he doesn't like it, it's an interesting, interesting thought. I love the idea of promoting it, I just, once again, you just have to.
I think we can, maybe we can be creative as to replacement of them, you know, I don't think we need to.
Well, what I was told, I did do a little research, so what I was told about other towns that did redevelopment, that the number one, to get momentum was through the commercial real estate market, was that the commercial real estate developers, those types of guys are the ones that typically go out and bundle and do things like that, so there's a, that's one side of it. I think you're right about information that's on the, on the website that can be looked at. We had a gentleman come in, Joyce was with me, we were trying to make copies, and it was right, so if we had it posted on our website, it would, I would have to make copies of the, of the tax map and things like that, they would go on, remember that? You wanted tax map information, so we knew exactly what blocks and lots, or, you know, now, our website already shows property ownership. So you can go on our borough website, if you see a property, you can find out exactly who it is, it doesn't have your phone number, but it says who the individual entity that owns.
I got a text today, literally, from a real estate person, and it said, it, it, my phone number was my husband, it said, hi David, you the owner of 104 South of Main Avenue, I am a real estate developer. I got that text today. I just texted back, not for sale, thank you, and they said, thank you, but I didn't change it. Yeah, where'd they get that information from? Joyce, the public records.
I, I get those calls.
Exactly. Phone owners, but the ownership is.
But she said she got a text.
It's over for the liquid tax list, and then these realtors and financial people solicit homeowners to say, you know, I'll sell your house for you, we'll lend you money, they don't appreciate, they always come back to us and say, why did you give them that asset, it's public records.
Did you have, because I wanted to, there were two things I wanted to bring, but I know you wanted to talk about the neighborhood enhancement grant first, or did you want to talk about that?
I do want to talk about it, it's just, I just wanted to let you know where Mr. Lee, Mr. Renee are this evening. I'll, I guess I'll just read this real quickly, this is something that says, Dear Runnymede resident, community partner Reimagine Runnymede has embarked on a new journey for our residents, organizations and businesses, our community has been invited to apply for the Heart and Soul Community Grant, a program funded by the Lyman's Orton and the Orton Family Foundation, that helps communities reach their resident-driven goals. The program has been successful, a successful model throughout the nation and through its partnership with South Jersey Cultural Alliance. Offers a unique opportunity to bring Runnymede to the forefront of Camden County. A $100,000 grant will be awarded to five communities, one in each county, in southern New Jersey in February of 2020. As the convening partner for this project, Reimagine Runnymede's care, I'm sorry, core volunteer group has completed a self-assessment and had determined we would like to lead the initiative in effort to bring the community Heart and Soul Program to Runnymede. A component of our application must reflect an evaluation of our community, both strengths, opportunities for improvement. Reimagine Runnymede will host a community forum to further assess our readiness to participate in the project. We will review our community interests, leadership, relationships, cultural, and the resources available to determine whether Runnymede will be a competitive candidate for this program. I have been asked to identify two of my Runnymede neighbors to attend this party, so I'm ready in this discussion, yada, yada, yada. So what this basically did, they sent this out November 4th, they're trying to get all, two people from all the community entities to come and sit down and chat about this. I was there for a half an hour this evening, just to try and say hello to everybody. President DeBois Scouts were represented, the Police Department was represented, Mr. St. Polsky and Mr. Murphy were there, Mr. Murray were there, the Senior Club was there. There was probably, I would say maybe 40-ish people there when I left, when I left early, because I had to come to this meeting. And they're trying to grassroots, get everybody together and, and do this, they had a, they had a pasta dinner they put forth. So everybody was sitting there, you know, having a little bit of pasta and gravy. They're having another meeting in the seniors' center room on Thursday, November 21st. And since, we're talking about this real quick, I don't have all the details, and I, I don't tend to be totally informed on this, but in a nutshell, we made the first cut. I think it's down to, I think it was, was it 110?
Well, it was like 80 something, then it went down to 40, so.
Yeah, it's now, it's like 30, yeah, we're under 40, we're under 40, so.
You went six towns from this town.
I'm sorry.
You went six towns.
So it's down to, yeah, one of the six towns.
Yeah, so.
Really good shape.
We made the first cut, and they're, I mean, Eleanor Kelly, Councilwoman Eleanor Kelly, is involved in this a lot. And they're really, it's really kind of exciting, I mean, I try to make as many meetings as I can, maybe on the third, Thursday of the month at Mr. Lee's studio at 7:00. And it's really exciting to see some really smart, articulate people coming out and, you know, Joe will tell you, at the R Y, the same six people did everything for, for years, you know what I mean, it was just, it almost got to the point of depressing, you know, it was like, why don't, you got a dentist, I tell you, it's like, why don't these parents go and do anything, you know? And he's really got a good grassroots group of smart people. We had the dedication of his mural, which is the first mural to be put up in the town on the side of this building. We had the dedication, I guess it was two or three weeks ago, very well attended. The amount of food and refreshments that people from town donated, you know, all, you know, just, they have open minds and stuff. You know, and, and all those people that are working within the Reimagine Runnymede organization went out and got all that donated, you know what I mean, nobody had to pay for anything, all the deluxe bakery donated, you know, the bile donated, I don't want to leave anybody out, but.
Vault.
I'm sorry.
Vault.
The vault donated, you know, so there was all this food there that, I mean, the town, this is a great town, you know, it's really, really a good town, and it's really fun and exciting to, to be at the beginning of something like this, and as you well know, we, we did receive a $1,000 grant from Ocean Bank, and that was probably, ooh, is that winter?
What, in the city?
In the summer.
Was it the summer?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so we competed for that, and we didn't get first prize, but, you know, I mean, Ken and Rochelle did a demonstration where, I'm telling you what, no disrespect to any of the other communities, they killed it. I mean, they just killed it, they, they set the stage on fire, and it was just, it was amazing. They're just such artistic, articulate people, and they're just amazing, and they're so energetic, and they represent our town very well, so. I'm really hoping that if you guys want to get involved with it, you know, it's, they have a website, they have, again, they have meetings on the third, Thursday, I believe, at 7:00 at Ken's place, and the next meeting at the senior center is going to be on Thursday, the 21st at 6:30, and they're giving out, you know, free pizza dinner, a host by Reimagine Runnymede, your local nonprofit. So they're trying to do the $1,000 grant, I'm sure they appreciate any and all support, and, you know, let's see how things go, and we wish them the best.
So on that note, though, the Ken's mural got in the New Jersey League of Municipality book, there's a picture of it with Runnymede saying that they won the $1,000, so I'm going to get it, we'll frame it, and we'll put it, I read the, you put it in my inbox, and so there's a nice picture, we were the top town with a nice picture on there. So the reason is, that was positive, so if I could, some business we do have to take care of. So, we finally got our first redevelopment zone almost done. I'm now going to propose our second redevelopment zone before we even finish the first redevelopment zone. The La Quinta, the Holiday Inn, Candace has already helped out, she did a preliminary analysis. For them to turn this building into something, an extended stay, a hotel, a type of hotel, anything like that, there's a lot of money that's going to need to be put into it. After a simple review, the building's been empty, it's blighted, it's in need of, it's in disrepair, in need of repair. We've had fire issues, we've had fire concerns, we've had police concerns, so we think that it would be a zone that could very easily meet the standards. Now, different than the first properties that we did, 300 properties, including so many residential homes and all that, this is much more into the roundhouse of redevelopment. You've got a location that's, that's blighted, that needs some work. So Candace did a quick summary, I didn't bring it with me, but, but you're here, so just saying anything if I'm saying incorrectly. It's really only a few months' process, because we're only going to talk about one project. Of course I'm going to throw a curveball in it, because that's my job to throw a curveball. Again, I think that this, that's a home run, and I think we need to do it, it's the only way that property's going to get redeveloped. It's really that simple. The way it's, the way it was built in the 70s is not conducive for an easy changeover. So the gentleman that flew in from, where'd they come from, Indianapolis, or where'd they came from, California? So they, they came in, Fred met with them, chased them around the building for a little bit, and then I got to meet them for a little bit, and they're interested, they want to do something, but this is where government has to partner to get something done. This building is going to lay vacant, it's going to be a problem for all of us unless we kind of help out, and the redevelopment law allows us to help them, to fix this building up. So, more than likely, you guys are going to be charged once again, you're going to get a letter from the mayor and council saying to start this process, and we're going to do it as quickly as possible to get it, to get it through. It's only a single parcel, shouldn't be, shouldn't be a big deal. But to throw a curveball in, I got another phone call, and, and it sparked my interest that along Ninth Avenue, there's a lot of land that hasn't been developed. And Candace, I need you to look at that land along Ninth Avenue. What, what happened was, one of the, a business owner looking at the Black Horse Pike was interested in more warehouse space, but we don't want warehouse space on the Black Horse Pike. It's not part of our master plan, it's not part of a redevelopment on a road that has 20,000 cars. Warehouses belong in industrial zones and things like that. So, if possible, and I don't know if bare land meets the same criteria, but that land's been empty for a while, there could be a stretch, you know, and I don't know if we can jump around, or if we have to draw a nice little square.
I'm talking about the Richards Group, it's also the Richards Group area.
I'm not on the Richards Group, I'm talking about to incentivize the Richards Group and to, and for someone who's looking to build a warehouse, some type of incentive to get.
It's definitely right, it's definitely right to have something, that's for sure.
Yeah, and then the, the land that, that starts Richards Group, that ends on, on Clemmersridge Road, across from the vault, that has a, that has a, I think that has a great opportunity to be a quasi-industrial slash commercial, because it faces the commercial. a quasi-industrial slash commercial because it faces the commercial and it has such a large industrial back. If anyone knows, you know, the rental closed on Ninth Avenue. One of our largest buildings back there, the major tenant left. So half of that building is now, nothing to do with Runnymede. Had more to do with the business plan of United Rental. They have a different business model that they're, they're doing less locations, more deliveries. I don't know if anybody deals with that. I do. So, I think we need to, Candace reevaluated it. So if you have the ability to send that, what you have in front of you, if everyone wants to stay at the end of the meeting, she does have a little summary of how quickly we could do this single parcel. But does your drawing show Ninth Avenue?
This is actually the proposed zoning map that's in the redevelopment plan.
Did you bring the La Quinta one? So does anybody have any concerns with this? Does anybody have any problems with looking forward with this one?
Absolutely not.
So there's no chance of getting that liquor license.
Right now, anybody looking at that property, the law says you have to have a minimum of 100 rooms. Most of the business models of these hotels nowadays, they don't really want restaurants. They want, their model is more what you see at Deppard. Free-standing hotels with a breakfast that opens up with a garage door and closes, or you know how they just open and close it? And they're close enough to Starbucks, they're close enough to other restaurants in that area. You saw two new hotels were just built on Route 41 in Deppard. Why? Proximity to shopping and food. Our predecessors building that hotel back on Ninth Avenue off the Pike was a mistake. If they were here, I'd tell them it was a mistake, you know?
That's your opinion, not your approach. It prospered.
It prospered well.
Yes.
It prospered well, but it changed. And if that, you know, to compare us to exit four of the Turnpike, you see the difference. You know, our properties are shallow, but you're right, no good for salt. No good for salt. But having a building off the, off the air, they're still, they're still in interest. Don't get me wrong, they're still in interest. You may be making it a hotel. But the mod, one of the problems is the size. Most of your hotels that are being built right now do not have over 100 rooms. They're more, right, the two that just got built, maybe in the eighties, eighties or something like that.
Hello, I'm sorry. This is my.
No, no, I don't mind.
I'm in Deppard because we're the engineers for Deppard.
How big are those two?
They are slightly over 100 rooms.
Slightly, so just at the liquor license.
Yeah, so we were, because we're looking at, we're doing a redevelopment plan in Elk Township and they actually don't want small hotels. So I was trying to do some research and figure out what's the minimum for like a respectable, normal Holiday Inn or whatever? And it's 100 rooms.
It's about 100, so ours was 165. It got reduced to 146. Because a few years ago, the, some of the rooms were made in doubles, suites and things like that. So they took the one, I think it was 165, right, and then the 146? Is that something? 160, something like that, in the 160 range. But like you said, that extra 40 rooms is a lot. The banquet facility, things like that. The gentleman also said at one point that the one, one potential operator who wanted the banquet facility torn, ripped down. Ripped down the banquet facility and the restaurant and all that. And remove that altogether from the building. And then the sides and all these other kinds of things. And the fact that the building is built all on a block. So concrete, concrete structure with block walls makes it tough to knock walls down. You met with him, Keith. But they don't even want to change the footprint of the rooms because of the extra work. So, once again, I'm going to try to put on the agenda for the caucus to start moving on this to either just do the La Quinta property or encompass the other vacant land on Ninth Avenue. I don't know if we can hopscotch, if we can jump around.
There are two different zones there.
Well, the special economic, well, both are in the special economic development zone.
Do you, I think I have it in my car, if you don't mind. I'll run out and I'll grab the map.
This is, this is something I think, we've got, just to give everyone some information out there, the property taxes on the Holiday Inn is 172,000 dollars a week. You know, this is substantial amount of money into the barrel.
While they get paid.
Joyce?
Just enough to be able to tax it.
Yeah, and I told him, I was actually with the owner and I told him, it's 18% interest. It's a 6% penalty over $10,000. I said, if you owe us 172,000 bucks, do the math, right?
At the end of the year, if it's over 10,000, the delinquency, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, he's bleeding cash right now and he wants to do something now. To his defense, Tapestry, who came in front of this board, got approvals, really felt that they had everything laid out and it just, for some reason, just didn't happen.
I think they didn't do it, that's what I think.
They didn't do it at time that people came from any.
That was, is that right? They pulled out.
Did they buy or they even bought?
They held it and agreed to sell for over a year and a half. But let me just say one thing that the owner did say. He did say that he was still working with them, with the possibility that, you know, they, they're still, because when they did the demographics, they did all the research, it really would work, but they just didn't get the money for it. So his thought, once again, might be to be the background, to be the equity guy. So that's still not 100% gone because there is a need for senior housing and all that. Once again, it's all about the numbers. And that's why the redevelopment zone allows us a little more flexibility to. It might hurt the school a little bit, but it's the, you know, one way to at least keep a property from being empty because the school board's represented here tonight. One of the, this event is a redevelopment zone is potential loss, and I do use the word potential loss of school board revenue and county revenue. Because the law says that we don't have to pay the schools anything and only have to give the county 5%. But that's only what the law says. It doesn't mean that's what it is. I would argue if there was impact on the school, we have to be very conscious of it. You know, if someone came in and wanted to build something that would impact the schools, we need to be.
Absolutely.
Did you bring it in?
Yes.
So this was, and we can circle that out real quick. Or you can just, yeah. So, just so everybody can see, you see the highlighted area. So you can see the Turnpike Authority owns the land right, right next to it. So that would be the single piece of, the single parcel that is in the special economic development zone. But what I'm proposing, Candace, so you know, is the additional land here and here that's not being used. So I don't know if we can hopscotch, you know, even this land here, will we allow the hopscotch around?
Yeah, I mean, you just name the block and mark parcels.
We can do it that way and make it one application?
Yeah.
So is everybody able to pass that down?
Even this is an entirety of blocks.
Okay. Tell me my first time, so we can say it to you.
You said that I was like, well, you have to do this.
Why did I know it had to be a contiguous? It's not, it has to be.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we use the term spot zoning, right? They, you know, it gets a little tricky and I didn't know if we could jump around.
No, as long as it doesn't make the block, you know, why? They don't have to be contiguous.
Okay, okay. So, you know, how many years has the rich group been building it?
We can't do this here. This is a good sliding hill. We can't build any of that. It's a good sliding hill. Please call that suicide hill.
So I think that the highlighted area would be yellow, but because this other gentleman called me, actually before I came here this evening, it made me think about the underdeveloped and that would be a good department, right? It's an underdeveloped, unimproved parcels that we could maybe add to it. Because we're not getting any revenues from it anyway now. We're getting almost nothing. For land, you're only getting a small, right, Joyce, our ratables are very little on just land only. So we build a couple million dollar. If you cross over from the vault, that's a nice piece of land there. You bend around, there's a nice piece of land to the right and then there's one where we're talking about the sliding hill. And then if you continue the entire hotel, that parcel, the hotel's actually very big. That parking lot is big, you know?
That big spot.
And he's going to talk about subdividing that. Once again, it depends on the use that he does with the hotel. If it's, you know, subdivided to do something in that back room. Now, just to throw one more thing out there, is if the hotel is no longer a hotel, the days in would like to build a second building. Because he feels that he's now doing well without the competition of the 165 rooms. He's that boutique size where he's too small at 40 rooms, but at 80 rooms, he would be more, more in line. And I would hope that Fred would say, well, if he comes in front of this board, we get to fix a lot of things with him. And I agree. If he came in front of us, it would be an opportunity to fix the entire property up. So there is a little bit of movement going on there, you know? We do have to market ourselves better and we have to show ourselves to be more professional. And just, you know, we know what we're doing a little bit more. I'll be the first one to say that I don't know all this stuff. And it does put me in, in short pants. Okay, we're doing that? I think great.
So, yeah, we couldn't add those parcels to the map and we have a proposal.
So what I need from you guys, from BAC Association, because our thing costs money, is proposal, Candace, on what this is going to cost to do this plan. The timeline, just like we did the other one now, it's not going to take a year. So the timeline would be a public hearing or only notice line. Really two coffiners, right?
Would we add it to the district redevelopment plan?
No.
It's too late at that point?
Yeah, yeah, it's too late. You just have to restart the process over again. And at least it's going to be the first season.
Yeah, it's a whole different use. We only want this to really be industrial uses, that type of. Got to go? I need your input, man.
Can you get the rant to the Turnpike rep?
The rant that's.
I put it on my loan list. That's all I need. I need the D O T to do me a favor, so.
Someone will show me that.
Try, you try that every day?
I have to drive by there every free day.
You have to drive by?
It's about.
You get on it? Stay to the right.
I don't go on if I have to go by.
Okay, that's all I have to say and hopefully that's enough.
All right. This is the good note there, portion of our meeting. Anyone in the public who can speak on any matter whatsoever, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address and be heard.
Okay. Charles Buckeye, 223 Sunny Brook Road.
Welcome.
Before I have to say anything that's on this list, I just want to compliment all of you for the stability that you have during these meetings. Now, I've served all two different board events. I serve currently on the Board of Directors for Ken and Kelly, the KES, the Service Commission. And sometimes things aren't quite as pleasant. But at least you are all willing to listen to each other's ideas and opinions and it's appreciated. I've been coming to these meetings now, thankfully, for three years and I appreciate the work of you people though.
Thank you.
You need to hear that.
We appreciate it.
Everybody likes to hear that they're appreciated. You must have read my mind because the first thing I had on mine was a question, what's going on with the twins property that you've answered that? So you don't need to say anything else. This is just a question as a citizen on Sunny Brook Road. I noticed that started in late August, a few houses down from you on my side of the road, there's a constant flow of vans and trucks going along to the property next to Mr. Awkley's property. And it gives me the impression, and even on Saturday, I've seen these vehicles going through the house. Is this individual running a business in itself as a part of the business to make sure what they're doing is done in a residential area? So I wanted to bring that to your attention, that, I don't know what he's doing, but it appears like a business.
I've been out there, but we do have limits. We allow, we do allow home-based businesses. You have to be registered and you're allowed basically one vehicle, right?
Yes, there are times where there are three vans of the size to park with the property.
And that's where he's, one of these guys, and once again, he's my neighbor too. He pushes the line. And he's pushing the line more and more.
How many employees don't live there? Is he allowed to have?
Just one.
Just one.
He's over on that also.
So I mean, you might know somebody in the office that's probably complaining.
She tried to melt shut. She likes.
So, yeah, Charlie, you're, he's definitely, he's pushing the line as far.
Because it's a narrow street, sidewalks. We have, you know, being retired, if I'm not on the cop course, I am home and I, we have young kids who get off the bus and walk down that street and down comes these vans that leave the property and it's a narrow street. Just curious. Question I have is with this heart and soul grant, which sounds exciting, how does the money have to be used if we were awarded the grant, you know?
I know a bit about it. Let me.
Let me take it.
Oh, sure, I mean, I have, yeah, good.
Sir, in general, it's community-based events. So one of the ideas is bringing the community together to do things together. So it's about bringing groups of different backgrounds together. And it can't be used for capital investments and things like that. It's more used for promoting community togetherness.
Like events?
Events, yes.
So if you had a Runnymede day with.
Food trucks.
Food trucks and amusements, you would pay for that. So we'll not pay though to put a park in, we would not pay to put.
Exactly.
Sidewalks or.
It's, exactly. It can't be used for that.
That's all. I understood the same thing. Blood capital and how to be used as expense, operating expense.
All right, well, we have a heck of a lot of computers in the Running School District and maybe if this grant's supportive, one of the things we could work on is offering free classes to senior citizens and others in the community on how to use PowerPoint or how to pull a box and et cetera. And then they could supply, maybe that grant could supply food while they're being traded, things like that.
Charlie, do you want to borrow my workbook on it and then you can go through it as your teacher?
Sure.
I'll give you this at the end of the meeting.
And I'll bring it back to you.
Just give it to Joe or something.
Also want to share with you that Monday, I attended the program at Bolt School. We had a veterans' breakfast for the veterans that live in Runnymede. We did contact VFW for them to reach out to veterans who come. Unfortunately, we only had nine attend, but we had nine veterans. And our kindergarten class, San Gobles America. And then students at the school had written letters to these nine gentlemen that served. Most of them were in the Vietnam War, how much they appreciate their sacrifices that they made as a veteran. And I also want to share with you about one veteran from Runnymede. This individual went to college and at the end of his second year realized he didn't know what he wanted to do. So he left college and enlisted in the United States Army. He's been in there for 21 years. Went in as an enlisted man and did two tours in Iraq. Came back from Iraq and decides to go to OCS school. Came out the other end as a lieutenant. He is currently in his 21st year in the United States Army. And in that period of time, he has earned a bachelor's degree in criminology, a master's degree in business and a master's degree in kinesiology. He then went to Afghanistan, did two tours there and was seriously injured with an I D D. And to this day, he still has shrapnel in him and he had to have total reconstruction of his one knee. And this individual is currently a full teacher instructor at West Point. And he's up there now for three years. This is something grew up in this town, went to the public schools in this town. And he will be promoted to major in January and that's my son, Jeff Buckeye.
Wow, congratulations.
And in the 21 years, he has been awarded three Bronze Stars, a Purple Heart and has been recommended for the Silver Star.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Major Buckeye, very nice.
That is awesome.
It's my street. It's a good street.
And is there anyone else wishing to speak in the public?
Single one has to make a motion that goes in the public court.
Second.
Motion by America Fawkes, seconded by Mr. Awkley, all in favor? At this point in time, there's no other questions or concerns. The board will entertain the motion to adjourn. Mr. Awkley, seconded by Mr. Laberry, all in favor? Motion is granted and he needs to adjourn.